All the ward please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor, members of council, advertiser of this evening is a public hearing to begin approximately at 6:30 PM. Regarding the proposed ordinance which is on tonight's agenda, it's called the Airport Overlay Ordinance. And in a moment, I would ask if anyone in the audience wishes to comment, but perhaps just a very brief explanation. This ordinance is actually required by an act that goes back to 1984. As you can see, many municipalities were not even aware of that act, but it was called to our attention through a seminar at the airport years ago. In any event, what it requires is to create an overlay onto our existing zoning regulations that would prohibit the height of structures from intruding into the sky here at the airport. And the easiest way I can describe it to everybody is if you can picture a strip which is the runway and you were to put a bowl, a large bowl that fanned out over the runway, as you got further away from the runway and further away from the bottom of the bowl, the height would increase to reach the sides of the bowl and ultimately the top. And that's the position we're in here in the city. The bowl would actually sit over the runway out here in Unity Township. And two things I would call to mind, one, remember when we go to the airport, we go uphill. That's a grade there going past the Dairy Queen. So the runway is actually higher than the downtown area of Latrobe. That bowl probably sits 100 to 200 feet higher from the get-go when you compare it to our downtown area. The extremity of the bowl that actually comes out and over the downtown area, and I might add that it does end at the downtown area, it has no bearing on anything pretty much from Alexandria Street on up. But that outer edge allows for structures to be built, I believe it's approximately 300 feet in height. And I'm told by representatives of the airport, Mrs. Monzo in particular, the only structure in our whole community that would protrude into that prohibited height area is the smokestack down here at the old Standard Steel Facility. And what the ordinance does provide, that if there is any structure which currently protrudes into a prohibited area, that structure is grandfathered, it does not have to be removed or torn down. What the regulations would govern would be the height of structures being built in the future. But if we picture what we have here, even the high rises do not protrude into that protected area. So it is an ordinance basically that creates this height restriction area. It is required of all communities, I know that Mont Pleasant Borough has passed it already and there are a couple of other municipalities around this airport and the one at Rostrator that have enacted such an ordinance. The ordinance has been duly advertised, the public hearing has been advertised, so if anyone in the public wishes to make comment or ask questions regarding the ordinance, please go to the microphone. I guess my explanation was okay. Hearing no comments, one last opportunity, does anybody wish to offer a comment? I gather not. With that, Madam Mayor, the public hearing portion of this meeting is now closed.
Thank you. Barb will call. Mr. Jim Inangelo?
Here.
Mr. Jim?
Present.
Mrs. Wolford?
Here.
Mr. Scopora?
Mr. Boldenary?
Here.
Mr. Forge?
Here.
Mayor Griffin?
Present.
Six present. Approval of minutes in the March 12th, 2012 meeting, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that the minutes of the March 12th, 2012 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where there will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
Second.
I second the motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Citizen's requests, would anybody like to speak? Give you time, five minutes. If Jim will be here, we give him three, but he didn't come tonight. I give him three. Okay, sure enough, nobody wants to speak? All right. Committee reports? Any reports from council? All right. Board of authority, Marty here.
Madam Mayor.
Charlie?
On behalf of the Latrobe Municipal Authority, I want to report that we will very shortly be issuing 20 permits. They're titled National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permits, and they will be pursuant to the ordinance that the city had passed in 2008. And I could elaborate on them if anybody has any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
I got a question for Mr. Jim. Mr. Jim, I've seen some major potholes here from the digging for the water through some breaks and stuff. When are they going to start patching some of these holes up, bring them up to the level of the roads?
I do know that they have patched some, but I'll report it, do you have any specific in mind? Otherwise, I'll just talk to Mr. Gray at the Department of Public Works and ask him to, again, reassess what they've done.
Okay, I'll talk to Captain May then, Richard.
All right, thank you.
All right. Department reports? Chief Boomer?
Nothing, your poor man.
John here, Farquhar?
No reports.
Anne? All right, go on to Public Works.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item on the agenda under the Public Works Department is a resolution accepting a bid awarding a contract for painting, now therefore be resolved section one, that the bid of J.J. Brown painting submitted in accordance with the bid specifications, the labor materials for the painting proportions of the exterior municipal building, for total contract amount excluding any change orders not to exceed $7,900 being the same as hereby accepted in section two, the contract being the same as hereby awarded the J.J. Brown painting in accordance with bid specifications for a total contract price not to exceed $7,900. Upon preparation of the appropriate contract documents to be approved by the solicitor, the mayor, city manager, city secretary, any other local city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign the contract documents and take all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution and the contract approved nearby. It is all due to council and the state commission with each of the proper resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I so moved.
Second.
I'll second, Abby.
Any discussion or questions?
Yes, Mr. Bush, are we buying the material or is that, are they buying the material with that bid?
We are buying the paint.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Madam Mayor. Onwards says painting of the portions, is that all painted services, Joe?
Yes, that's all, your garage doors, your fascia, round hole, basically everything you see that's blue, plus the garage doors, bubble blow each window.
Thank you, Joe. Ken, did you have?
Yeah, Abby, how many bids were, did we receive on this?
Four.
And this includes all caulking, prep work?
Yes.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry. This is Resolution 2012-22. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jim Inangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Boldenary?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six, yes. Motion passed.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is simply a motion. Reads I move we authorize the solicitor to prepare an advertising ordinance to include certain alleys into the city of Latrobe's street plan. It's my understanding that the engineer is looking to find those alleys that are not part of the street plan which could be included for purposes of the liquid fuels rediversment.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jim Inangelo, second.
Second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Boldenary, any questions or discussion?
I want I to. How do we, how's this going to come about, actually?
Per pending requirements for an alley to be accepted as part of the public road or street network here in the city of Latrobe, it needs to be at least 16 feet and connect to public streets. So for example, if a street, if an alley is a dead end, it wouldn't qualify. And if it's less than 16 feet, now 16 feet is basically the cartway and/or in a right way description. Our engineer has prepared a preliminary map, if you will, of what they deem to be eligible, and that's being reviewed by staff, including field views as well, so that we have a group. Once that group is, it will be bundled, if you will, together and then presented to council as per the advertisement being requested for this evening.
Alex, will all the alleys in Latrobe be serving?
We will and have looked at all of the alleys, however, only a portion of those will be deemed to be eligible on that two criteria, primarily connecting to public streets and having that minimum right way width.
Most of, many of the alleys in the general plan of the borough are one of two widths, 20 foot or 10 foot. So anything that's 10 foot can't be approved. For those that are 20 or 16.
I'd like to ask a question. What are we going to do with the money, the extra money that we get from the alleys? Are we in fact going to pay alleys or are you going to pave some street?
It will be treated like what we do with rest of the liquid fuels, as needed.
You will not be paving the alleys with the money that we theoretically get from the alleys?
That is correct. We'll be doing our road system kind of like we've done before, which is the highest priority roads are those that are the most volume and the worst shape, if you will. Having said that, I think it's real important that council think about that and we discuss obviously which roads are the highest volume and which ones are in the worst shape. Now that may be at one time or another, a particular alley. It may fall into that category because of its importance and its condition. But what it allows us to do is have more resources to deploy, you know, into our street road network. It doesn't require, for example, and once we put these roads into the syst, or these alleys into the system, it doesn't require that they get special attention to be built up to a certain standard by a certain date. It just allows us to have more revenue to work with within our streets department.
But I think we need to do an assessment of the alleys in some way, rank them based on, you know, I mean people that can't park behind, in front of their house, or, you know, alleys that are extremely deteriorated and find a way, you know, a couple of year or something like that to do this, to put some money into it.
Yeah, I think moving forth, we need to dedicate a percentage of our budget to alley maintenance, which heretofore we haven't done.
I agree with him.
I just want the public to know, these monies have been available for a number of years. The city has never acted in a way to obtain these monies. And I just want you to know that since Alex come aboard, he was responsible for looking into this so that we may obtain extra liquid fuels money. So who goes to Alex?
Okay, any other questions or discussion? May I have a motion?
We did, oh, we just need to.
Okay, this just the only, okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we're now moving into the police department. The first item is a resolution, and that resolution reads amending chapter 256 vehicles and traffic. Exhibit 256-55 on-street meter parking facilities now therefore be resolved. Section one, that exhibit 256-55, schedule nine, on-street meter parking facilities being the same, hereby amended to add to exhibit 256-55 the following streets. The street would be Depot Street, the side would be the Southway side, and the location would be between Ligonier Street on the east and Jefferson Street on the west. Section two, the director of public works is hereby authorized to determine a type of space best suited to this location and the number of meter parking spaces to be installed. Section three, that any and all other ordinances or resolutions inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section four, that the provisions of this ordinance, or of chapter 256 not amended by this ordinance shall remain before force of effect, and section five, that to within ordinance shall take effect immediately. The motion would be to adopt the resolution, if I say the ordinance, I meant resolution, adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
Can I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I so moved.
Boldenary, second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Jim Inangelo?
Questions?
Discussion?
I met with Dr. Brian last week and I talked with Dr. Dayhar. I would, I would ask Joe, how many, was it 10 that you had for that?
Yes, I draw, I have some drawings where depending on what council wanted, I could go as high as 10 and then council would also talk about backing off. At one time, I believe there was 13, Alex, on that drawing?
Yeah, we have, in your packet included this evening, right behind the resolution itself, are a couple drawings. The first drawing, it starts with the family video right a block where you have the existing meters. The next drawing, again, is the drawing between Ligonier and Jefferson. And you've got a couple, you know, looks at how that works out. One includes the traffic lanes as far as directional movements, straight and right and left turns, and then again, the number of spaces. And Joe also backed off to, if you wanted to shorten the number of spaces, he'll give, he has the 15 and the 40 foot mark, if you will, marked on the drawings. Does this council have it?
Yes.
Well, that's what I was, my concern was, Richard and I talked about this the last meeting, that I would like to have it back a little further before, is that, you know, they turn right away and want to turn onto Jefferson. I know it's okay up above by Mark's place, Mark Boryo's place, but you're not turning onto Ligonier Street.
As it's drawn, there's 11 spaces and the idea of what you're suggesting is, you know, whether you move that back to 11, 10, or 9, I don't believe solicitor, the number is stated in there.
It's on.
And Richard, would you?
Yeah, first of all, this is, we're only talking about, according to the resolution, between Ligonier and Jefferson, so we're not talking about adding spaces.
We're not talking about adding spaces on the south side of Depot Street between Alexandria and Ligonier. We're just discussing this resolution just pertains to between Ligonier and Jefferson. Yeah, my question has always been, why are we putting them on the south side? You know, and I think somebody suggested, well, when you go up Main Street between Jefferson and Ligonier, there's a jog to the right. But you have to remember, when you're going up Main Street from Jefferson to Ligonier, cars are parked on the right, and that's why, and you turn to the left. Now, if you go from Ligonier Street down to Jefferson Street, there's very few cars, except perhaps the mob's car, that turns right on Jefferson Street to get down to the brewery. Most of the turns are left to go out toward where Mike has his shop, out toward Gertrude Street. So that's one of the reasons that I sort of didn't favor this south side, because I feel it's just impractical, and I'd like to hear what the chief has to say.
Before, before Jim speaks, I guess my concern with that, Richard, is that everybody then is opening their car doors into traffic, whereas if they're parking on the other side of the street, the drivers are opening their car up on the sidewalk, and the businesses that are impacted are on that side of the road. That would be my only concern about putting it on the other side of the street.
I see that because I noticed when people park at the liquor store, usually one's driving and one that's getting out is getting out on the passenger side, but at any rate.
Do you see that often?
With that, but I've been there once or twice in the last four or five years. But chief, do you have any input on this? What's your thoughts?
I just think it would be a traffic nightmare. I think it will really jam things up. I expressed my, you know, opinion about it before and strongly against it, but, you know.
I have concern about that, I mean, only because of the traffic that is on that street anyways. But I don't know that there's that much traffic using that far right-hand lane. So I'm not, I guess it's not something that we can't undo if we don't like it. And I know the business owners are very much in want of this.
Yes, they are.
And I know Dr. Dayhar was supposed to be here tonight.
So was Dr. Brian.
Something must have come up and they're not here, so.
Yeah, they were both supposed to be here tonight. I could be in favor, maybe say, maybe five or six, I don't know.
Madam Mayor, I have the same feeling. If the, if the parking meters were spread far enough apart, you could theoretically pull in and not have to back in and then back, come backing out because you have to do on Main Street. Believe me, I park on Main Street a lot and I know what it's like when you have to back in. You, you know, there's a lot of horn blowing at you. And then when you have to pull out, you have to be very careful. So I just, I just would like to see less spaces. If, if it's going to pass, I'd like to see less spaces so that you could pull directly in and not have to back in. I think it needs a little more work myself, I think this has to be looked at and the chief has to look at it also. And I might remind you, Dr. Dayhar's supposed to be here. Since we decided to build the garage, we haven't seen anybody from the traveling building, any of those doctors show up at the council meetings. You know, I'm just wondering what happened to them after.
Well, they're off the parking authority now.
Well, we don't have them either, and the parking authority isn't showing up. So anyway, I don't feel it's proper to pass this thing the way it's set up at this time.
Any other discussion?
I don't think it's really going to hurt anything. You've got Ligonier Street as one of our busy streets and they back in the park. They have truck traffic stop there to deliver and it handles it. So it'll, it'll be just fine, I think.
And it's not something we can't change. If it turns out to be a traffic nightmare, then we come back in a couple of months and say this wasn't a good idea.
Well, are you in favor of the whole, as it is now, or, I'm in favor of partial? Well, I think Dr. Dayhar.
I say we try, we start with 11 and if it becomes a problem, we back off.
I mean, that's.
I think it would be easier to add spaces. If we start with eight and we find a problem with eight, I just as an arbitrary number, I'm removing the spaces and repainting the lines, you know.
I'm not spreading this space, it's like I see testing. Instead of having the double meters, have a single meter and 30 feet or 35 feet so that you can pull directly in.
On this motion, we're just going to vote to do it. And then who's going to approve the spaces?
Yeah, the resolution doesn't say how many. Your public works.
That's where I think it's up to Alex and Joe.
Okay.
Who is it up to?
That's a management decision.
Alex, I mean, I think he's heard, I think they heard what we're asking for.
Well, all right, but chief, can you get any input into this? He's traditionally, traditionally has worked out all traffic problems in parking, always. I've never seen it other than that.
Perhaps this is a break from tradition for me.
Maybe he always gets what he wants.
Not all of them.
Steven, was everything?
To alleviate this problem, like Mr. Jim mentioned earlier, and I mentioned at the meeting, last meeting, before I talked to Alex and chief both, to making that juke on that south side right in front of the Borden Building, it is no different than the little juke we make and you keep the turn lane and you make that other just straight lane. It's no different than the juke we do right up here on Ligonier and Main. That alleviates a problem that leaves you with that turn lane.
He's suggesting along the.
North side.
And Jefferson, right now, the far right lane heading south on 981 is a right-only turn lane. The middle lane is a straight lane, the left lane is a left-only turn lane. What he's suggesting is, in effect, allow for the traffic to shift a bit, like it does on Main Street between, you know, going up from Ligonier, and allowing that right lane to be straight and right, the center lane to be straight, and then the far lane to be, you know, the left.
Well, that's what we were going to do.
We didn't talk about the painting of the stripes, we didn't talk about the changing of that. It hasn't been discussed yet.
Well, that is one thing that's going to be done, the painting of the stripes when the meters go in. I mean, we have complaints now on what's going on down here in front of municipal building where all these parking meters, it's still a yellow card, they still have the right-hand turn arrows, and a lot of people are still complaining and confused by that for as long as it's been in, even with them parking meters being there.
I know.
Excuse me, Stuffy, you believe that the parking should be on the north side of Depot Street?
The parking could stay on the businesses' side, but on the right-hand lane in front of the Borden Building, all that lane comes, that would be your straight lane, the other lane would be your turn lane. It comes down, say halfway or one-third of the way down, you have a pain with arrows for your left-hand turn lane, that leaves your parking free, that leaves your left-hand turn lane, and that gives you your straight lane through still. I feel that if we take that left-hand turn lane away, you're going to get a lot more complaints to what you think. I mean, you may sit there and watch traffic go by and say, okay, not that many cars use it, but in the public's eye, they don't see it that way. They're going to look at this that way.
Is it now, is it now exist, Stuffy, that isn't a left-turn lane solely you can go straight down past the post office?
Exactly, alls we have to do is repaint it and designate it as a left-turn lane only.
I don't think enough left-hand turns are made there to designate that solely as a, as a turning lane. And I like the traffic pattern as it was previous.
Mr. Boldenary, I disagree with you. I mean, I'm just trying, I'm looking out for the public here and I'm telling you, you're going to get more complaints because it's already been addressed, people have seen what's been in the paper, and I've talked to numerous residents about it and they all have the same train. You can still make that a turn lane and a straight, a straight arrow with a turn. I've seen that a lot of places and it works.
Wait a minute, what's the difference between the turn at Alexandria Street and that turn? I'm trying to see the difference.
What turn at Alexandria?
Well, when you're going out 981 north.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You come down Alexandria Street, there's parking all along the left. You turn onto Alexandria Street and go down to Depot, or you turn right and go left.
Difference is in the amount, you know, there's much more traffic turning left on Jefferson from Depot than there is turning left on Alexandria from Depot.
Let's give it a try.
All right. Any more questions or discussions there?
As I understand it, what we're trying is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 parking spaces. That's what the resolution reads, Mayor. Well, somebody will have to amend the resolution then.
Okay, with a second? A second? Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna voice for... Barb, with a voice, by the way.
We vote on the motion.
Motion, this is amended.
Yeah.
Yeah. All in favor of the amended?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
How many? No's?
Two no's.
Okay. Two no's.
We're limiting this to eight spaces.
Right.
Did you vote, Barb?
Yes, I voted for yes.
You voted yes with eight?
To, to, for eight spaces.
So how many yeses with eight spaces?
Four.
All right.
We can add...
No.
No, we're not voting on the resolution as amended and I would, if the resolution passes, I'll make the perfect change to state that it's limited to eight spaces.
This is Resolution 2012-23 as amended. Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
No.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote as five yes, one no.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item under the Police Department is also a resolution, amending Chapter 256 Vehicle Traffic. It's entitled, Establishing a Parking Drop-Off Zone on the Southerly Side of West Harrison Avenue of Abiding Property Owned by Samuel H. Sarath III. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that Exhibit 256-1, parking prohibited at all times, be in the same as hereby amended to add the following. The highway is West Harrison Avenue, the side would be the south side, and in between, there's no rule between, but it's two spaces, abiding property designated as 1901 Ligonier Street. And under the appropriate sections of our ordinance, a request needs to be made by the property owner and permission granted by the Chief of Police to authorize a signage for a drop-off zone. There will be a limitation of fifteen minutes for dropping off per vehicle. Ten, okay, ten minutes for, for a vehicle.
I got fifteen.
Well, I'm informed that that, that is probably the wrong number. I believe it is ten. So that'll be changed to ten minutes. This one on the second page, it's a very tough one. Uh, the motion would be to adopt the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor.
Have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jim and Angela, second?
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Forge, any questions or discussion? Ken, Richard, any questions or discussion on this?
This is Resolution 2012-24. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote as six yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item appears under Planning and Development. It is a resolution approving the subdivision request of Adelphi USA Inc., whereas Adelphi USA Inc. applicant pursuant to our code ordinances has submitted and requested a subdivision of certain properties situated in the Sixth Ward, known as the Adelphi USA and Henry subdivision, whereas the applicant submitted plans and specifications to the LaTrobe Planning Commission, whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the plans and specifications submitted, is recommended approval of the subdivision, now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the subdivision being known and designated as the Adelphi USA Henry subdivision, requested by Adelphi USA Inc. applicant according to the plans and specifications submitted to the LaTrobe Planning Commission, be in the same as hereby approved. Section 2, that the city manager, secretary mayor, and any other partner city officer are hereby authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution, and Section 3, that this resolution will become effective immediately, the, uh, motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jim and Angela, second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldonari, discussion? Questions? Okay.
This is Resolution 2012-25. Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote as six yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, a second resolution also requesting approval of a subdivision. And if you will note, I, uh, described the Adelphi subdivision as Adelphi USA and Henry subdivision, and that is because there is a, a land swap, if you will, between Adelphi USA and Mr. and Mrs. Henry, so that requires two different subdivisions and two different approvals. Uh, this resolution reads approving subdivision request of Lawrence F. Henry and Catherine E. Henry, uh, whereas applicants have submitted plans and specifications to the LaTrobe Planning Commission, whereas the Planning Commission has reviewed the plans and specifications submitted, is recommended approval of the subdivision as requested, now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the subdivision being known and designated as the Adelphi USA and Henry subdivision requested by Lawrence F. Henry and Catherine E. Henry applicants according to the plans and specifications submitted to the Planning Commission, be in the same as hereby approved. In Section 2, that the city manager, secretary mayor, and any other partner city officer are hereby authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution. Section 3, that this resolution shall become effective immediately. The motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Paul Mary, second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Jim and Angela, questions, discussion? Any questions or discussion?
This is Resolution 2012-26. Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote as six yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is an ordinance under the Planning and Development Department, and it is the Airport Overlay Ordinance, which was the subject of the public hearing held earlier. Because of the length of the ordinance, I'm simply going to read the title, and it is entitled, In Ordinance of the City of LaTrobe Setting forth its authority to establish an airport district overlay to include purposes of the district, definitions, airport zones, airport zone height limitations, permits required, use restrictions, non-conforming uses, variances, conflicting regulations, and amending the official zoning map by the adoption of an official supplementary airport overlay zoning map. The proper motion would be to enact the ordinance as outlined by title by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forge, second?
Second.
Mr. Baldonari, any questions or discussion?
This is Ordinance 2012-5. Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote as six yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we now turn to the Administration of Finance Department and the first item is a resolution, and it reads, Declaring vacant a position on the LaTrobe Civil Service Commission, whereas pursuant to resolution duly enacted, Marshal Lynn Savage was appointed a member of the LaTrobe Civil Service Commission for a six-year term, said term to expire January 31st, 2015, and whereas notices have been sent since 2009 to Ms. Savage at 321 Miller Street and were returned. Also, Ms. Savage advised the city secretary that she had a new mailing address, which is a post office box in Youngstown, Pennsylvania. Further, the city secretary has not been able to reach Ms. Savage by mailings to any known address for the past three years, and whereas, to the best of its knowledge information and belief, Ms. Savage is no longer a resident of the city, but rather resides in the borough of Youngstown. Whereas, the Administrative Code of the City of LaTrobe requires the members of all boards, authorities, and commissions shall be a resident of the City of LaTrobe at the time of and throughout the term of said membership. Whereas, pursuant to the Administrative Code, Ms. Savage can no longer maintain membership on the LaTrobe Civil Service Commission, now therefore be resolved, Section 1. The membership of Marshal Lynn Savage on the LaTrobe Civil Service Commission is hereby terminated and her position is declared to be vacant as of the date of the passage of this resolution. Section 2, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take any and all steps necessary to fill the above-described position on the LaTrobe Civil Service Commission resolved in council disney, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolford, second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Baldonari, any questions or discussions?
This is Resolution 2012-27. Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote as six yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is simply a motion, and it is a corollary to the one just passed. I move we adopt... Scratch that. I move we authorize the city secretary to advertise for applicants to the Civil Service Commission.
Have a motion?
So moved.
For a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Jim and Angela, questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, there's one more item under Administration of Finance Department. It is a resolution. I'll read the, uh, the caption. It is ratifying the actions of the city manager and signing of a memorandum of agreement between the City of LaTrobe and Assme District Council, Act Number 83, Local 629. Whereas, the city and American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, District 83, Local 629, here and after the union, are parties to a collective bargaining agreement, which is due to expire December 31st, 2014, and whereas, the city created a position identified as community service officer, and whereas, the position of community service officer is not part of the union, whereas, the city and the union recognize that the position of meter attendant is part of the union, whereas, the position of the meter attendant has remained vacant due to the retirement of the previous meter attendant in December of 2010, whereas, the city has furloughed two employees, one being a full-time clerk and the other part-time clerk, and whereas, the city and the union meant to discuss the accretion of the CSO position to the union bargaining unit, the modification of the meter attendant position to a meter attendant administrative clerk position, the posting of the position of meter attendant administrative clerk, the posting of the position of the CSO, and subsequent recall notification of the two furloughed employees, and whereas, agreement was reached between the city manager and Assme, uh, to be ratified and approved by city council, now therefore be resolved, Section 1. Council of the City of LaTrobe is hereby ratified and approved, memorandum of agreement entered into, between the city manager and Assme District Council 83, staff representative as well as other representatives of both parties on March 20th, 2012, and the form attached here to Exhibit A, in Section 2, the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other city officer are authorized and directed to take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the within resolution and the provisions of the memorandum of agreement attached here to, resolved in council disney. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
Okay, will you like to take an executive session?
Before we do that, I'd like to make a motion to simply table this.
I'd like to have...
This resolution, I think we need to...
I'd like to have the executive session.
Do we have the executive session?
I want to have the executive session first.
We're gonna end up tableing this regardless. I'm...
All right.
We need somebody to amend it.
Barb, I'd like to rescind my motion to table this resolution.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution. The, uh, I'd like to exclude the part regarding the community service officer and include in the resolution only that part, portion of the resolution that addresses the meter attendant position.
Will you have a second?
I'll second that.
Voice, Barb, is this?
Motion and voice vote.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carried.
We're not voting on the original resolution as amended, deleting all references to the CSO officer and approving only those provisions as to the meter attendant slash administrative...
They can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Can't hear you. I'm sorry. Uh, the resolution is now amended to delete the provisions related to the community service officer and to approve those provisions in the agreement relating to the meter attendant slash administrative clerk.
Jim, free motion. Right? No? Okay. Any other discussions?
This is Resolution 2012-28 as amended. Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Baldonari?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote as six yes.
Motion carried.
That is all, all the agenda items, Madam Mayor.
Number 10, unfinished business?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to question Mr. Kelly with regard to the crosswalks, what's the status of that?
As I indicated at our agenda... I indicated at our agenda session, the, there is no problem with the statute of limitations. We have ample time before that comes into play. I've been trying to do things in sequence, Mr. Baldonari. We have the airport ordinance out of the way. I, I've said before, the next step is we have to take action regarding our, our police pension plan, and then I plan to get the complaint prepared and ready for filing.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Anyone else run for interest?
I'd just like to also bring up, in fact, Ron Wymer's here and the poles are down on, are they not, on Lloyd Avenue?
The poles are done. We're working on the tooth that we had to leave up, and we did get some grab money to do landscaping, so we'll have a public meeting on that.
It should be noted, Councilman Baldonari, that five or six years or more of, of Ron's time has been devoted to that, so congratulations on Ron.
We're having a big party over on...
The managers' report is before you. Just a budget overview we've accomplished or been through one quarter of 2012.
We have new business before your report.
I'm sorry.
New business? Anybody? Okay.
2012 budget, first quarter over. As far as the revenue goes, we've, we're about 23.81% of what our budget revenue would be for this year, and if you, you know, just looking at quarters, at 25% is where you kind of want to be, but on expenditures, we're about 22%, 21.77%. And another item on Thursday, there will be a committee meeting related to the new garbage contract in the single-stream recycling. In the back of council chambers, the public is asked to look at the three toads we have in the back. to the new garbage contract in the single stream recycling. In the back of council chambers, the public is asked to look at the three toads we have in the back. One of those will be the primary one chosen for the single stream recycling, which will allow residents to do glass, plastic, cardboard, newspapers in those toads. So, for those who are here tonight, go ahead and take a look at those, and we'll be having a committee meeting on, on Thursday for those who, you know, on council to join in that meeting. Again, just lastly, thanks to Ron Wymer for the work he's done to move that along on Lloyd Avenue. We are also doing, I should note, a study on Lloyd and Unity of that light. It's been determined preliminarily that we can change the light. We have to go through the steps that Pendon related to our traffic concerns on Depot Street, southbound movements, 981. There'll be, I believe, the good bit, once that light gets adjusted, to allow for the movements that are proper, given the current traffic situations there. Any questions? And of course, available at any time to be, to discuss specifics. Would welcome council to come by and talk.
Alex, may I add, on the plan as it stands now, which hasn't been approved yet by committee, I think we're thinking recycling every week. So, when you take a look at the recycling containers, keep that in mind. It appears to me that each of them can be lifted with the same forklift because they have the same distance between them in the center. So, that's-
Be really exciting to have that opportunity. Everything from a spaghetti box to your newspapers can be recycled under the single stream, so you'll be able to really reduce what goes into the land.
That's why I was gonna ask you to explain a single stream. But you can put all kinds of things.
Glass, cardboard, newspapers. Yeah, as long as the material isn't, like, for example, pizza box might have debris on it or other kinds of oils.
I think people usually eat their pizza.
Come on that committee, I'm coming in here to know.
I thought it was Wednesday. You changed to Thursday.
Thursday, you confirmed.
Did I?
Yeah, sorry.
I didn't confirm. You and I are rich or what?
I thought we were Wednesday.
That was originally, but it is for Thursday, 2:00.
It's not on my calendar.
We do it early.
Can we do it before? Well, yeah, it's on here.
I have to, I blew a pizza for dinner.
I'd make it, do it in the morning.
We discussed this.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay. Okay, my only question is, not question, but comment. We are only, everybody has to, we're only gonna pick one size, right? I can't say, I like the middle one.
We have not advertised nor received bids yet, but the vendors prefer one size because it's a bulk order for them. In other words, they would like a five-year agreement, and it's gonna cost, I don't know how much those things cost, about $100 to $125 for maybe the large one or more. To make that kind of investment, they want A, five years in the contract, and B, one size. When they have multiple sizes, it lessens their buying power, lessens their, you know, return. So, in general, that's the way we would look at it. What we discussed in our agreement was the concept of allowing families to pick one of the two, but that may then cost us more. So, at the end of the day, that's one of those things we're gonna have to look at to see what's in the best interest of the community and for the price.
Well, I was just concerned about, there are a lot of people who not gonna be able to get that dragged out. It could just be your alley maybe, but lines on the street.
Unfortunately, not everybody recycles. I'm sure for those who are committed to doing it, they'll be glad to have either of the three right now or Big Joe.
Alex, I don't want to give away any of my thoughts very early, but we do want to bid this so that everybody is bidding the same thing. In other words-
Yes, sir.
If we bid the 90 gallon, or we'll bid all 90 gallon, or all 65s, or all 35s, but the bid will come in on one of the sizes, and then I think the residents should have the opportunity, and then there would be a, possibly a change order of some sort in the total bid.
Yeah, I'm curious as to why.
But I, I think that's something we have to discuss. Essentially, what I'm saying, Mayor, is that I think that the proposals for the bid will probably allow the residents to choose the size that they need, and hopefully it will be the smallest one.
Is there a reason why you're, you're, you've gotten away from the idea of every other week versus every week?
Since, yes, use a smaller container, you keep the time cleaner, and we don't think it's gonna cost that much.
Joe, I have a question. What do you think about the smaller container? Deal with everything.
I believe if you're gonna go into single stream recycling, especially dealing with all your boxes and that, I like the medium-sized container. You're talking, people get two newspapers a day, all your cereal boxes, your Mother's Oats boxes, all your lineman cans boxes. I know for a fact now that we chase a lot of plastic down the road. Of course, there's not a top on it, on our current one. But what I don't want to see is for all of our residents to try and be doing the right thing and not have enough room, and then start piling beside it. That's what we don't want.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to hear from you.
Anything else, Alex?
Do anything else, Alex? All right. I don't have anything particular, just thanks, everybody, for, thank people for coming to our meetings. Yeah, you are permitted to talk, so. Okay, that's why I was like, yeah.
Should I do it, Jared?
Okay, Mr. Baldonari, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, where's Jared?